Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the July 21st, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting. It's so nice to see so many smiling faces, even young smiling faces. Thank you for coming, I appreciate that. So would you call a roll please?
Councilmember Dennehy, absent. Councilmember Maloney.
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Here.
Councilmember Stein.
Here.
Councilmember Tracy.
Here.
Councilmember Worthington.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Here.
Mayor Troutman.
Here. Would you please rise for a Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is with the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any people that would like to speak to council at this time? Okay. Are there any councilmembers that like to have any remarks or suggestions or make a comment or a statement? Just go right ahead. It's a quiet bunch tonight, goodness. Okay, we have some recognitions and these are really great. At this time, the citizens commendation, I'd ask Chief Schick to come forward for this particular presentation, commendation, and... Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. If I could, I would like to call Callum and Colin up here to join me. Come on up, come on, don't be bashful. You both said you had your speeches ready. So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, today marks a very special occasion. I have the distinct privilege of showcasing both integrity and high character as demonstrated by these two local young people. On July 5th, 2025, while playing at Rouse Park, these two young citizens discovered $900 in cash. Having the solid character, having solid character, rather than taking the money for themselves, these young men took the money that they discovered, took it home and provided it to their parents and asked to call it in, concerned that someone had lost a considerable amount of money. The very next day, an out-of-town couple showed up at the PD and were able to lay claim to that large sum of money that they had lost the day before. This would not have been possible without the act of character and kindness illustrated by these young men. In light of their impeccable character and an act of responsible citizenship, which the rightful owners and our community at large are greatly appreciative, I would like to ask council to join me in recognizing Mr. Colin Leeson and Callum Sack for their selflessness and responsible act of returning something of significant value to its owners. On behalf of the Canyon City Police Department and City Council, with your consent, Mr. Mayor, I would like to present them both with a certificate of good citizenship recognition, an agency challenge coin, and a thank you card. I would ask for everybody to offer a round of applause for these outstanding young citizens. Callum? Congratulations. Hey. Will we do a picture, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, come on up. Thank you so much. Young men, we appreciate you being part of our community and thank you so much for your, not only your courage, but your honesty. So come on up.
Come on up.
Jimmy always wants a picture. Maybe can you just stand closer together? He's back there, right? We'll have to have Mrs. Stein and Mrs. Tracy's picture for that. The other ways, the other ways. Yeah. So there's four here at this time. How about you go on this side too? So it's four of four. Okay, and then you can go back to there, share on the front. Thank you. You have a tall young man there. Let's sneak over. Oh, okay. All right.
There are a couple more if you have a picture back here. You can go off and get pictures if you want. Come on up. Congratulations. 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 Thank you. Well done, gentlemen.
Thank you. That just really makes your day, your week, your year, to hear that. That's so wonderful. And we'll look forward to your openings on City Council for you. Probably not. So, the applications are in the mail, so... Okay, then we have proclamation for the Elks. Benevolent BPOE Elks and Number 610, 125th Anniversary Day of Celebration. Would you like to come forward? I am so f- I forgot your name again, I shouldn't. Jennifer.
It's okay, Preston.
It is Jennifer. They see you too much. So Jennifer, I'd like to read this proclamation at this time and then we'll present it to you with pictures. So, this is Canyon City Elks 125th Anniversary Day of Celebration. Whereas the Benevolent and Protective Order of Elks, BPOE, is an American fraternal order and charitable organization founded in 1868 in New York City. And whereas the Elks Lodge 610, which has a storied history, was founded in 1900 and still thrives at 404 Macon Avenue in Canyon City, Colorado. And whereas Elks 610 invests in its community through programs that help entertain, encourage, and inspire children and young people to grow up healthy and drug-free, and also honors and assists local veterans as well as other endeavors in the community. And whereas Elks Number 610 Lodge is much more than just a building or other physical amenities, rather is a place where neighbors come together, families share meals, and members gather for fellowship and good-natured camaraderie. And whereas to celebrate this historic milestone, Elks Number 610 has opened its doors and created this celebratory occasion on Saturday, July 26th, 2025, filled with games, music, and general frivolity, free of charge to the public. Now therefore, I, Preston Troutman, Mayor of Canyon City, on behalf of the City Council and residents of the community, do hereby proclaim... Whoops. Saturday, July 26th, 2025, is Canyon City Elks Number 125th Anniversary Day of Celebration in honor of Elks members and Lodge leadership over the past 125 years. Jennifer, would you like to comment on that, please?
I would. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Troutman and councilmembers. My name's Jennifer Irvin, and I have the privilege of serving as the current president, or as we call it in our lodge, Exalted Ruler of the Canyon City Elks. It's truly an honor to stand before you alongside my fellow lodge members, and we just have a few here today because we're working hard tonight to get prepared for our celebration this Saturday. So with me is Benny Johnson, who is a 69-year member of our lodge, and many of you know him, and then also Gary and Suzanne Ashby, who are some of our newest lodge members, but some of our most involves. We are honored to receive this proclamation, and I just wanted to take this time to share just a few words about Elks because not a lot of people really know what the Elks is really about. But it's an organization that has made a profound impact across our nation and our community, and we're just simply called the Elks, many of them call Elks. Mayor Troutman, your son is a member, and Councilwoman Schmisher is a member as well. So we're really proud to have many of our prominent people in our community as part of our organization. Founded in 1868, Elks have grown into the one of the most largest and most respected fraternal and charitable organization. Locally, we have 386 members here in Canyon City, and there's another lodge in Florence, but there's more than 800,000 members nationwide, spanning over 2,000 communities, and we're dedicated to our communities and to our country. Membership to the Elks is open to U.S. citizens aged 21 or older who believe in God and are sponsored by a current member who are in good standing of any lodge across America. At the heart of our organization are four cardinal virtues: charity, justice, brotherly love, and fidelity. Our commitment to these values is reflected in our ongoing support to youth, veterans, and community initiatives. Our lodge here in Canyon City has served as a cornerstone of the community since its founding on July 30th, 1900. The original lodge was located at Schaefer Hall at 4th and Main with 44 members, and in time, we acquired the Bailey Corner at 4th and Macon. This is the site where our historic building still stands today, having hosted its first meeting there in 1912. As part of our tradition, each meeting includes a pledge of allegiance, opens and closes with prayer, underscoring our dedication to American values and community fellowship. Each year, the Elks invest in benevolent, educational, and patriotic programs that benefit children, veterans, and communities across the country. I could probably stand here all night and tell you all the things that we do in our community, but just as an example, last year, the overall, from a nationwide standpoint, Elks provided an incredible $800 million in charitable support, $12 million in scholarships, $27 million in community programs, and awarded over $40 million to support our veterans. Here in our own community, just some of the programs that we have is that we have a Flag Day that we host in coordination with Florence Elks Lodge Number 611 at Bruce McCallus Nursing Home. We have a local hoop shoot and soccer shoot, and we have sent kids to Nationals. In 2015, Canyon City Elks had a national basketball winner, Jerika Moore. She joined at age of 21 and is currently serving at the national level as part of the hoop shoot. We hold a bowling tournament and Christmas baskets and veterans' move-in baskets, and we donate over $5,000 locally to veterans' programs, and last year, over $6,000 to at-risk youth. We also have a club bar, hold social events for our members, and rent our event space out to the public. We're so excited about our community and our 25th, 125th Annual Celebration. We are opening to the public, as Mayor Troutman said, on July 26th at 4th and Macon. Our festivities are going to run from noon to 10:00. I passed out to you, each of you, a summary of all those: street games, lodge tours, a celebration of our lodge history, one of our past Exalted Rulers, Randy Keller, who is also our county coroner, and our state president, J.R. Cruz, is going to do some of those presentations. We'll have happy hour in our courtyard and a street dance featuring a band from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. We'll also have a charity dunk tank benefiting CASA and raffle drawings benefiting our local youth and veterans. So I brought to you informational flyers, our special 125th Anniversary pin, and membership materials, because we would all love to have you join our wonderful organization. We want to warmly invite you and the public to our historic lodge at 4th and Macon to discover more about the Elks and firsthand how you can become part of our tradition and serve us to our community. We thank the City Council for your ongoing support and for helping us carry forth our legacy in the community. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jennifer. I think Benny...
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry.
I believe for the Exalted Ruler of the Elks, I believe the proper form of address is your excellency.
Is that...
You're troubled.
I'm sorry, couldn't remember your name, Jennifer, but I was going to add that we have a distinguished member of a former mayor of Canyon City sitting right here, Benny Johnson. You were two-term, three-term? You were mayor... Actually, you were mayor in the old building, weren't you? Oh, okay.
We opened this building here.
You opened this building here? How many terms were you...
Two meetings, and I thought I got cheated.
You could come and do it now if you'd like to practice. So again, thank you, Jennifer, and I know the whole town, and we appreciate what you do for us and for the youth of our community. So we would like you to come up right now and we'll take a picture if that's okay.
Yep. Come on, guys. Yes, take a picture. You're fine. It's okay, Preston. It's okay. We're getting the dunk. Oh, yeah, we're sorry. Good.
I'm sure I have some... I'm ashamed, she wasn't here.
Oh, you're here.
Yeah, there we are.
Oh. Okay. And we can see you right here. She's doing that on her...
You can maybe one line...
One line? Yeah. There we go.
No, no hiding. Thank you.
I need to... Thank you.
I didn't bring him some. I think he's busy. I have a camera busy all over. I didn't know.
I didn't know. I probably don't know. Yeah. There, one count.
Yeah.
Court here with prison.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah, we work close together. We did a lot of stuff for the city.
I bet so, yeah. Yeah.
You had one more thing you'd like to add?
I just wanted to also thank George. He's also a member of our Elks organization, and we really appreciate him. He's been a great supporter as well.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer? Jennifer, Jennifer, Jennifer. I just wanted to make sure... Never mind.
I'll tell Shirley on you.
Oh, no. She's probably watching right now. Lucky I didn't get a text. All right, that was fun. Let's move on to the consent agenda. I'd ask the city administrator to review the agenda and the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Item 8A is to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting on July 7th, the general government meeting on July 9th, the special meetings on July 7th, which was in executive session, and July 10th, Royal Gorge Chamber Alliance dedication. 8B, awards bid 42-25, meeting management software to Open Meetings Technologies LLC and an amount not to exceed $10,500. 8C, awards bid 46-25, backflow software to SHI under NASBO contract number CTR060028 and an amount not to exceed $7,875. 8D, authorizes a stormwater parcel acquisitions. 8E, authorizes emergency authorization for MRAP repairs and an amount not to exceed $8,779. 8F is to receive and file monthly budget summary for May. 8G is to receive and file cash disbursements and P-card disbursements.
Okay, thank you. Are there any additions or corrections or questions from council? Emmy?
Thanks so much, Mayor Troutman, and thank you, City Administrator Stevens. I have one question on 8D and then just one comment on 8E. On 8D, which is authorizing a stormwater parcel acquisition, could you just speak a little bit about how these particular parcels will help us in stormwater management in this city?
Yeah, these two parcels, they're connected. So one parcel is, you know, offers access to the other parcel, and one of them is part of Mud Gulch. We have stormwater parcels that are north of this particular asset, and we're also looking at possible acquisition of other parcels there along Mud Gulch, which, you know, we currently have, you know, drain... You know, it's currently part of our drainage system. So this will help from a vegetation management standpoint and keeping these parcels kind of in conformance with our stormwater management plan.
Thank you. Just given how important it is, our stormwater fees going towards stormwater management, just wanted to take that time to ensure that it was clear. The other comment that I had was on 8E with regard to repairs for the MRAP or the Mine Resistant Armor Personnel Carrier. It's a relatively small amount to take care of delamination, but I do think it's important to just make the comment as to why we have an MRAP and how we use it in our community. And in the... To make this take as little time as possible, I'd love to just share what Chief Schick shared with me earlier today, which is, you know, the city in particular uses the MRAP. Our Special Weapons and Tactics Unit uses it exclusively, and that in and of itself is a formidable site, which... And it's offered in standoff some potential arrests of violent felons that potentially involve the use of firearms. And historically speaking, this readiness posture of using an MRAP is both an escalation and de-escalation in force because once deployed, MRAPs often become a valuable tool in de-escalating situations, causing the respondent to negotiate and relent. Additionally, the vehicle is offered in community engagement events showcasing readiness posture. So when it comes to officer presence, the MRAP certainly does heighten that capability in our community. So thankfully, it's only been used a handful of times in the past year and hopefully will only need to be used a handful of times in the coming year, but it does kind of have that visual impact that is occasionally necessary for situations in our community. Thanks.
Thank you, Emmy. Any other questions of administrator? Emily?
I just wanted to make a brief comment about item 8F, the monthly budget summary. Just, and certainly staff can add to this if they wish, but we're continuing to see a little bit lower revenue stream from our sales tax collections through, I guess through May is what we have the most recent. And I, you know, I think I would assume it's still just attributed to the consumer confidence issue we talked about a little earlier in the year. So far, staff has been adjusting things as they are able to do, postponing some hiring and things like that. We haven't had to do any formal budget changes for 2025, so I just wanted to let the public know that we're watching that closely, that we, you know, will have to continue to watch and see if there's greater impacts that we'll have to deal with at council. But I don't know if... Ryan, if you'd like to say anything more about that?
Yeah, from a staff standpoint, we're continuing to monitor it very closely. There are certain projects or, as you mentioned, hiring that we've put on hold, you know, waiting until we have a clearer picture of what sales taxes can do and looking to see how, you know, the summer numbers start to come in.
Thank you, Emily. Any other questions of our administrator? I see a hand. Yes, Emmy?
Yes, sorry, I just have a follow-up question to Councilwoman Tracy's. Would it make sense, City Administrator Stevens, or I don't know if this is a better question for City Attorney Sellers, do we need to bring those decisions to council, given that we approved the budget last fall if we are consciously choosing to not move forward with certain pieces of it because we are anticipating a lower revenue? Do we need to bring that back to council to formally pause moving forward on those to ensure that that's kind of the will of council? Thanks.
You know, I don't know. We can ask Catherine, but I think from our, you know, from my position, from a staff position, we don't necessarily have to bring in anything back formally for council unless we're exceeding our, you know, what we have in the budget. But I'll let Catherine provide a legal answer.
No, that's correct. There's no legal requirement that those decisions come back to council under those circumstances.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emmy. Any other questions of anyone? Not? I would ask for a motion and a second. Someone would like to do that? Emily?
I move that we approve the agenda and consent agenda as presented.
Second. Kathy, thank you. Any discussions on that motion? Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Maloney.
Aye.
Schmisher.
Aye.
Stein.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Worthington.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Aye.
Okay, well, thank you all. And for the past two weeks, we've patiently been waiting for the administrator's report. I always do that to you, you know, that I got to.
I know, I know.
So, okay. We'd ask for administrator's report this time.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you have written in the reports, there are several projects that are currently working, several street projects in particular with resurfacing going on around town, and as was mentioned prior to the meeting starting, those streets are looking really good. We also have a full street reconstruction project that has started on Justice Center. Traffic on Justice Center will be open southbound throughout the entire construction process for that particular project. And then we have several other projects that are currently in the RFP stage. So we have requests for proposals out for design of the Clark Station property, the former Black Hills site. That closes at the end of this month. And then we also have an RFP out for operations of the Royal Gorge Bridge, and that will close in early September, but we do have onsite visits this week, you know, for vendors to come in and take a look at the community and the bridge and be prepared to submit their proposals for that particular project. And then finally, I've been spending a lot of time working with the rec districts around the pool. There's a lot of things going on right now. The design is in full swing right now. There were several meetings last week with focus groups and public meetings in addition to stakeholder meetings with the city and the school district, talking about the schematics of the sites and site plan, and then also selection or interviews with possible contractors that can help with estimating early in the process and really trying to dial in what those costs are, not just to build it but to operate it as well, which is a big question that will be on this November's ballot. So still a lot of stuff going on with the pool. With that, I will, I'm happy to take any questions regarding the written report.
Any questions of our administrator? Ryan? Quite. Emmy, I'm sorry, it's a yellow hand there. Go ahead, Emmy.
Oh, no worries at all. City Administrator Stevens, I understand that with the transition of water billing companies that several hundred door-knocker notices were, had to be provided to water billing customers to ensure that they understood that they needed to update their billing information and that that occurred, you know, a week or more ago. Could you give us a status update on where that currently stands and if those transitions have successfully been made? Thank you.
Yeah, there were about 860 approximately door hangers that were sent out. I don't have a current number as of Friday, but I think at the end of day Thursday, that number had been cut in half or maybe a little bit less than half. So made some really good progress there as far as getting accounts sorted, and I imagine, you know... Uh, and then we have several other projects that are, are currently in the RFP stage. So, we have, uh, requests for proposals out for, uh, design of the Clark Station property of the former Black Hills site. That closes at the end of this month. And then we also have an RFP out for operations of the Royal Gorge Bridge, and, uh, that will close in early September, but we do have, uh, onsite visits this week, um, you know, for vendors to come in and take a look at the community and the bridge and, um, be prepared to, to submit their proposals for that particular project. Uh, and then finally, I've been spending a lot of time working with the Rec Districts, um, around the pool. There's a lot of things going on right now. Uh, the, the design is in full swing right now. There were several meetings last week with, uh, focus groups and, uh, public meetings, uh, in addition to stakeholder meetings with the, the city and the school district, uh, talking about the schematics of, of the sites and site plan, um, and then, uh, also selection or interviews with, uh, possible contractors that can help with estimating early in the process and, uh, really trying to dial in what those costs are, not just to build it but to operate it as well, which i- is a big question that will be on this November's ballot. Um, so, uh, still a lot of stuff going on with the pool. Uh, with that, I will, I'm happy to take any questions regarding the written report.
Any questions of our Administrator? Ryan? Quite. Amy, I'm sorry, it's a yellow hand there. Go ahead, Amy.
Oh, no worries at all. Um, City Administrator Stevens, I understand that, um, with the transition of water billing companies that, um, several hundred, uh, door knocker notices were, had to be provided to water billing customers to ensure that they understood that they needed to, to update their billing information and that that occurred, um, you know, a, a week or, or more ago. Could you give us a status update on, on where that currently stands and if, um, those transitions have successfully been made? Thank you.
Yeah, there were about eight hundred and sixty, uh, approximately, door hangers that were sent out. Um, I, I don't have a current number as of Friday, but, uh, I think th- at the end of day Thursday, uh, that number had been cut in half or maybe a little bit less than half. So, uh, made some really good progress there as far as getting count, account sorted. And, uh, I imagine, um, uh, you know, Friday, late last week was very busy for the Water Billing Department. Lots of, lots of calls, lots of people, uh, in the lobby trying to get everything sorted, so, uh, we're, we're making good progress there.
Do you know what the timeline is or kind of if there will be additional notices before more, um, you know, more impactful steps, um, are taken?
Uh, I don't necessarily have a timeline, but I do know that, um, before we shut anybody off, we will be making personal phone calls to those accounts.
Great. Thank you. That's good to hear.
Thank you, Amy. Any other questions of Ryan? Okay, well, let's move on to discussion 10A. It's a second reading and adoption by title only of Ordinance 6, Series 2025, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Canyons, uh, City of Canyon Designating Structure, A Structure Located at 222 Griffin Avenue, Canyon City, Colorado as Historic Structure." Would you like to comment on that, Ryan?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, this is a second reading. We have not received any additional public comment, and staff would recommend passing on second reading.
Okay, any questions of council? There are none. I then seek a motion and a second on that. Would someone like to do that? Emily?
Thanks. I move for approval of Ordinance Number 6, Series of 2025, on second reading.
Second.
Okay, made in seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you. Let's move on to B. It's a second reading and adoption by title only of Ordinance 9, Series 2025, entitled, "Ordinance 9, Series 2025, An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Amending Title 6 of the Canyon City Municipal Code Adding a New Chapter 6.10 Concerning Cats." Would you like to comment on that, Mr.?
Again, this is a second reading. I have not received any public comments on this, uh, on this proposed ordinance, and staff would recommend passing on second reading.
Any questions of the Administrator? None? Okay. And I'd ask for a motion and a second. Emily?
I, um, in honor of my cat, whose third birthday is today, I'm going to move that we pass Ordinance Number 9, uh, Series of 2025, on second reading.
Second.
Second, Kathy, thank you so much. Any discussion on that motion? Call a roll, please?
Councilmember Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all. Well, let's go on to C. It's a second reading and adoption by title only of Ordinance 10, Series 2025, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Amending Chapter 8.30 of the Canyon City Municipal Code Related to Inoperable Motor Vehicles and Adopting by Reference as a Primary Code the Model Traffic Code for Colorado 2024, Addition by Repealing and Reenacting Chapter 10.04 of the Canyon City Municipal Code." Would you like to comment on that?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Tracy pointed out earlier today that, uh, the wrong version of this ordinance got uploaded, so, uh, there is one change, uh, changing the effective date from five days to thirty days as discussed at the last city council meeting. Uh, other than that, uh, I have not received any public comment on this particular ordinance, and I would, uh, recommend passing on second reading.
Okay, so, uh, any discussion at, uh, this time? So, the motion then will be made to include the upgrade to thirty days, so that would have to be included in the motion, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, would someone like to make that motion? Jared, go ahead.
I'll go. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I move to approve on second reading and adoption by title only, um, Ordinance 10, Series 2025, amended to change the dates from five days to thirty days.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on that motion? None? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Okay, let's go to item D. This is a stormwater rate study, and I invite the City Administrator, uh, to present the staff report and...
I am actually going to turn this one over to our Public Works Director, Leo Evans.
Okay, Mr. Evans.
Hi, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. Thank you for having us. Uh, this is a follow-up to a discussion we had back on March 19th, 2025, as a part of our Vision Committee meeting where staff presented a proposal and a rate, for a rate study that would modify the rate methodology used in the stormwater utility. Uh, in short, we're looking at two changes. One, which would change the residential rate rather than having it be assessed per impervious square foot or impervious surface area to a flat or a tiered rate based on, um, lot size or something to that effect. And second, to incorporate some sort of, uh, fee reduction or discount program for non-residential sites that, uh, do a lot of work to maintain infrastructure on their own, on their own property and their own cost. Uh, at that meeting, uh, both of those, uh, suggestions were received rather well. Uh, we did go back and work with the firm that provided the rate study and made some recommended changes to that to trim the scope down to be very focused on those two elements alone. And what we have today is that updated scope of work for the rate study portion of this, which would be used to, uh, sort of advise if this is a route we want to keep going down or if this is not something we want to pursue. And I guess the only other thing I would add is that there is a slight correction to the recommended action. We did get some comments back from the consultant late on Friday requesting a few revisions to the professional services agreement that I haven't had a chance to finalize with our attorneys, so we're not looking necessarily for a vote at this time on this item as the version that made it in the packet, uh, changed after it was included in the packet a little bit, so.
Any questions of Mr. Evans or Ryan? Emily?
Thanks. Mr. Mayor, I, I had asked earlier by email, but I thought I would just mention it now too, that, well, two things. Am I remembering correctly that we're not looking to necessarily increase overall revenue in the stormwater fund, but to change the way the, those rates are assessed against property owners?
Yes.
Yeah, how they're divvied up. And, you know, we, the other piece of that question is just, I, to make sure that we take a close look at who, if there are winners and losers with a proposed change, we want to kind of dig into that to make sure we're not doing something that's not equitable in some way, but you can comment on that.
Yes, uh, Councilmember Tracy, to answer your first question, yes, there's no intention to create overall rate increases. The, the overall revenue generated in the fund would be the same. This would just look to redistribute it, um, eliminating measuring impervious surface area on residential parcels. That's a very large staff burden that we're certainly, if I'm being honest, we're not able to keep up with that in a realistic, prudent time sense. There's plenty of parcels that haven't been updated in a very long time, lots of changes that happened that we have no way of knowing about, um, and just, it's not the most accurate data. I'm starting to think. To answer your second question, yes, we would have at least two times where the consultant would come back to city council and kind of present findings. One of the highlights of that would be to look at some sample customers and just evaluate what the rate changes would be on different tiers of customers and try to, as you mentioned, um, pick out the winners and losers, the people that would be most and least impacted by this change.
Anyone else? Oh, yeah, Amy, Amy, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, just to follow up on that second piece that you mentioned, um, Director Evans, with regard to the two briefings to council and kind of having those sample, um, rate case studies included, could you speak a little bit more about, and maybe it might be, um, I, it might be worthwhile to have a council discussion even as to when, um, those two briefings would be within the process? I think my concern stems from the water rate study where, you know, the, the first briefing to council came at the very end of the process, and I think that there was, um, perhaps not full agreement on council as to moving forward with, uh, the study as, um, as drafted or as presented. Um, so, I'm wondering if it would be feasible without actually costing more to move that earlier in the process and just would appreciate your thoughts on that. Thanks.
I think my thought would certainly be that we could do those meetings whenever council likes. I would like, in my head, to see us have a first draft of the plan, but maybe without any staff refinement or comment that came from staff, just a pure plan that's based on the data that we bring back to council and present that as the first draft and then use that as our opportunity to solicit, um, both public and council feedback on that proposal. The second meeting would then be to present the refinement from that first proposal.
Thanks. And that would be early enough in the process to where we wouldn't be mucking things up or making it take quite a bit longer, um, you know, if there were substantial questions and comments from across council.
Yes, I believe so.
So, sorry, Amy, are you? I don't have a hand.
Thank you, Mayor Troutman.
I'll pull my hand up. Um, so, you, the stormwater and the water rate, they're two different things. Actually, they are two different things. And so, what we're talking about now is the, we're talking solely about stormwater and how we're going to bill for it.
Yes, that is correct.
And that would be, come back to us from our experts that we're hiring?
We would have...
On their recommendations.
We would have two presentations of a rate study, and then, in order to enact any of those changes, we would have to have an actual ordinance to revise the, um, Title 13 sections that specify those charges and how those are assessed.
Yeah, Ti- Title 13 explains and has a formula for how all those charges are assessed, so, you know, that, you know, that, that's kind of the process that we're talking about is if we are making changes, um, you know, based off of the consultant's recommendations and, um, the public feedback that ends up being, being solicited, uh, we would have to, you know, go back and, you know, revise Title 13 as well as adopt those new storm ra- stormwater rates and structure.
So, the plan would come to a general government meeting and have the discussion there, then it would go out to the public for their input, and then come back again for a final move to our city council towards approval.
Yeah, I think we're, we're probably looking at, at at least probably two general government or committee meetings.
Yeah, potentially, um, typically, we would refer this to a water committee first as well, so there'd be another meeting ahead of the general government meeting for some comment and feedback from that group.
So, there's no time limit. It could take four months, six months?
Easily. Six months.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks. I don't see Amy's hand. Okay, any other questions for Leo or... Oh, I'm sorry, Emily!
I just, I just want to make a quick comment that I, I do think it's a really good idea for a water committee to take a first look at it, partly because there's some really good expertise in that group, and so, I, it's valuable to hear their input even before general, gen- general government committee.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Leo, Ryan? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Leo? So, we're going, go ahead.
Uh, I was gonna say, we, we can bring this back once we answer the, the questions from the consultants, so, uh, we're not going to ask for a vote tonight on this, even though it's, it's presented that way in the packet because of those last-minute changes.
Just, just a question. The water committee, this is stormwater, this water committee, what comments do they, what do they do with it? What is your thinking on that?
As Chair of the Water Committee, the, what, what the Water Committee does is, it will take a draft, it will take, uh, probably input from the consultants. It'll essentially go through the same process that council does. Will, the Water Committee will review the report, perhaps make suggestions, uh, and then forward it to, uh, council at a general government meeting with some comments, either approving or, uh, any recommendation made or something like that. So, it's a, it's a chance for a citizens committee to review the work before council sees it, uh, to, to, to help guide the process.
For stormwater or for water?
Yes.
This, this is stormwater.
Water Committee see, uh, hears both. They, they hear both water issues and stormwater issues. And irrigation.
I was trying to pull out. I got it now. Okay, so, yeah, got it. All right. Okay, thank you, Leo.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right. Good. Let's move on to E, which is Street Improvement Fund Ballot Language and Ten Year Street Plan. I'd ask the Administrator or Leo to comment on that.
Yeah, uh, we'll get a report here from Leo, but, uh, this is a discussion about potential ballot language. Uh, the current, uh, 1% for streets expires in December of 2026, and we are looking at putting it in the, on the ballot here in November to renew it, uh, so that we can plan appropriately moving forward with, uh, the projects that we have. And I'll, I'll pass it over to Leo for his presentation.
Yes. All right, thank you again. Uh, this was previously discussed at the May 7th general government meeting, for anybody that wanted to go back and look at that. What came out of that meeting was a direction to come up with sort of two differing versions of the ballot language, one that stuck to the status quo and largely maintained the existing language proposal usage term that we have, and one that looked to allow for, uh, expanded uses to sort of cover stormwater needs or water needs that tend to pop up on these street projects. A lot of times, we have street projects that makes sense to also reconstruct the water main, and then we run into a competing need where the street needs work, but the water fund can't necessarily support that work, and those projects don't always go through. So, the desire was to have an option that maybe looked at both of those. Um, so, included in the packet are versions of both of those ballots that were prepared by the attorneys, and I think what we as staff are looking for today is, uh, any additional feedback we have so that we can finalize one version of the ballot language, and then I believe we would have to bring that back at the two August meetings for adoption to be included on the November ballot.
That is correct.
I understand that, I had read both, uh, stay, uh, bounds, which one will be? The one that includes stormwater and water? It does concern me. Um, we have, especially with throwing stormwater in there. Water, I understand. Uh, has there any been, to your knowledge, there's been a situation where streets have not been done because they didn't have money in the stormwater fund to do it? I can understand water. I, I gun, I, I get that, but I'm wondering, it's just, I can see water, but I don't, I really can't see stormwater.
Yeah, I don't know that there's any specific projects that we have stopped because of it. There's projects that we potentially would have liked to look at doing more on them if we had the stormwater funds. Um, one that comes to mind for me would be, uh, the work we're doing on North 9th Street that we're near finalizing design right now. If we had additional stormwater funds, it, I would have liked to extend the stormwater system further up 9th Street, but we did not have the funds to build additional new infrastructure with those. So, the project is going to go ahead. We're moving it forward. We just probably had to do a little bit less stormwater work than maybe we would have liked to see.
Okay. Emily?
Yeah, I like the idea of putting the expanded uses language in. It doesn't mean that we always, you know, fully fund some very expensive thing, that that'd be part of the budgeting process and council would have input on, you know, we could maybe do a little bit with stormwater here, but maybe not as much as we'd like, but I just like that flexibility so that staff can look at what are the total needs of a stretch of road and then decide, you know, what are the priorities, what fits into the budget and so forth.
Yeah, and that's a probably good point. You, you can look at it both ways, that, uh, we, we always seem to come up occasionally, especially with the water. Stormwater is one of those that doesn't come up that much, and council could say yea or nay on that too, but, um, anyway, it's my thought. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, um, uh, as I understand what the, what the original stormwater, um, excuse me, the street repair, uh, committee, citizen committee looked at was that they, they desired to make sure that the, that the monies expended were for streets and not for other purposes. And I think that, I think that the, you know, I, so, I guess this is a question then for our Public Works Director, uh, Evans. So, does the, would, would you consider if this ballot language passed, would we, would the city then be able to move outside the language passed, would we, would the city then be able to move outside the footprint of the street to make improvements to water and stormwater structures outside the footprint of the street?
I would have to look at the specific language. If we-
That's a question, that's not a question about language, it's a question of what the intent would be.
Oh, the intent, the intent from my standpoint would be that we prioritize streets in the order they're prioritized, and we have the ability to fund the other needs that are associated with that street.
And, and so that would, you know, the, I have some concern there that, that, you know, given the, the, the process that the city went through and receiving a lot of public input on, on this particular issue, that, 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 you know, it might be convenient for us to want to move outside the footprint of the street, but I would think that it would be more appropriate to tailor the language in the, in the ballot question for the expanded uses, to make sure that we were focused on the street and not a mile away, for instance, because, because, you know, that's, that, that would, to me, be a selling point for the, for the public.
I, I think the, the, the way we're looking at it is that any water or stormwater infrastructure would be incidental to the street project that is currently being worked on. Is that a good way to putting it, Leo?
Yes, I would agree with that.
Now, I, I think, as staff, we, we think that, you know, the status quo is probably the, you know, has the best chance of being renewed. The, the new proposed language, I think there, there are some other risks that council probably needs to be aware of, not necessarily risks, but, you know, when you are, start putting tax dollars into things like water and stormwater, that affects enterprise status. And I, I don't know, Catherine, if you have anything you want to say about enterprise status or how that, how that works?
Sure, so your typical, your, your water, you have a water fund, and you have a stormwater fund, and those are enterprises, and their, their, their revenue is the fees that come from those specific services provided by the government. And so in order to exercise that enterprise status under tabor, they have to maintain certain rules, and one of those rules is they can't, they can't receive more than a 10% grant in federal, now I'm gonna question my own, well, in local funds, I guess, is what I'll say, meaning that transfer from the general fund is considered that grant. And so it's possible, depending on the circumstances, that that transfer could trigger a loss of an enterprise status, and you lose it for a year, and then you can regain it after that year. But I think that that's something to take into consideration. Enterprises do not necessarily considered to have any type of taxing power, so that's why it's linked to your general fund.
What, what, what would be the basis for the 10% calculation? So in other words, is that the enterprise, total enterprise fund, 10%, or is it the specific project 10%?
10% of revenue?
Correct.
Of revenue, 10% of revenue, so that-
In that particular year, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, 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 would, do we, do you have some idea, Director Evans, whether that, whether that would be sufficient to cover anything that we would, that we would need to, the, the 10% or less idea?
I, I believe there would be a good chance we would exceed the 10% in years, because that would also compound with any other external grants that the fund receives.
Oh.
You know, the, I believe Travis had a grant for a water master plan last year that was, you know, $150,000, whatever that was, so anything we added on top would count towards that cap as well. I don't believe it's just one source, it's all sources combined, so.
Thank you for that.
I think Amy had her, her yellow hand up first. Amy?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, following up, first of all, on the conversation we were just having, could you remind us of the downside of losing enterprise status?
Sure, so, as you know, enterprises can, the, the biggest advantage to an enterprise is its ability to create debt without a voter approval, and so you would lose the ability to do that. I believe your bond council has opined, because you are bonding in water and storm water, or just storm?
Just water.
Just water. So your bond council has opined that, that does not affect a previous bond that was issued. So if you issue a bond for water, and then, let's say, a couple of years later, you lose your enterprise status, it does not affect that bond that occurred a couple of years before, so, just to clarify that.
Thank you, that's helpful. I also just wanted to flag, I, the way that the expanded, I, I am in support, I, I think, although with this information about the potential of losing enterprise status, I probably want to think about it some more and ask some additional questions in the coming days, but I think I'm in favor of the expanded usage as long as it is directly related to the street that's being upgraded, so that we have the ability to actually prioritize the streets that are in most dire need. However, I think the way that the ballot language is currently written, it's written in such a way that it, it just says, "And to additionally fund water and stormwater facility upgrades," and it, it doesn't have that direct linkage back to the streets. So if it is council's, council as a body's desire to move forward with expanded uses, I would ask that we really tighten up that language and make it very clear what our intent is to the voters, so that when they are seeing that on the ballot, they know that it is directly related to street upgrades. My other request would be under expanded uses, we have a lot of existing sidewalks in our city that are in very, very poor shape. It is substantially cheaper to fix those sidewalks while we are also fixing the street, so while it may not be appropriate in every instance, I think it would behoove us to have the flexibility to fix sidewalks that are close to schools or are close to major routes to schools, at the same time as we are fixing streets, because it is cheaper and it makes it safer for our kids. So I would just ask that we also, as we're looking at tightening up the language on water and potentially stormwater, that we also figure out, is there a way to reference sidewalks or reference some, something so that we are able to legally use the funds in that fashion, if, if it makes sense for that particular street? Thanks.
Okay, Emily?
Yeah, I, my comment is almost on, along the lines of what Councilwoman Schmisher was just saying, I wonder if we just, this isn't the exact language that would be needed, but if we put in the expanded uses version of the ballot language, right around the middle where it talks about "And to additionally fund water and stormwater facility upgrades," maybe add language in there, says something like "Associated with specific street improvements," just so that it's clear that we're not talking about going off and doing some unrelated project with it.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the, I think that that would be wise to include some language like that. The, the, the one thing that I think that could be problematic is if we looked at this and, so if, if we have a, if we have a street and we're gonna be repairing a street, we have a master plan, a mobility master plan that calls for bike improvements, would we consider the tax money available for those bike improvements, or would that have to come from a different fund?
I don't know that there's a single answer to that, would be my first blush at it. If the, if the work was adding a sidewalk, maybe it is, if the work was building a, a total separate shared use path or something like that, that's probably not an appropriate use, but if it's infrastructure that's directly related with and associated with a typical street right of way, then I would think that you could include that.
Those are, those changes are mainly paint-based, correct?
Correct.
Emily, Amy, sorry, Amy.
Thanks. My question has more to do with the 10-year pavement plan, but given that Councilmember Dennehy is not present, I feel like I can ask this on both of our behalf, is, will part of the 10-year pavement plan also include those streets that are not currently paved, and what our review and prioritized ranking of those streets for potential future pavement might be? Thanks.
As it is drafted right now, it does not. It only includes maintenance, you know, maintenance improvements of the paved streets. My understanding is traditionally, we've handled improvements to convert a gravel street to a paved street via a, I forget the term here, a special improvement district, or through CMAC funds, which were air quality funds that were previously available to the city for dust mitigation, but we've not traditionally used street improvement or general fund dollars to fund paving a gravel street and improving it. But, just not to say that that is a rule that has to be adhered, that's been the practice as I understand it.
I think that there are some gravel streets in our community that are not just about the local residents who are living on that street, but are rather, and extra streets that many in our community use. So I think as we're looking at and potentially considering a new 10-year plan, that it would be worthwhile to maybe inventory and think through what, what is the current situation of our gravel streets, and what do we want our policy to be, or what do we want that long-term review process to look like? Thanks.
Okay, John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the, my question is, do we still maintain the list of the citizens committee 2A and their contact information? Would that information still be available?
I believe we still have that list, yes.
We still have that list. I, I would recommend, you know, what we're, the summary of this says that staff hopes to solicit, solicit council and public feedback for the preferred ballot language, and I would recommend that we do some outreach to those previous committee members, to perhaps provide them with some, some draft language or something to receive input that way, that, because that would, that could go a long way towards the public relations effort that will be undertaken if, if we want to do this.
We can do that.
And we're, we're bumping up a, a time limitation, because we want to get this on the ballot this year. We have to.
August.
So too many committees and too many things just delay it, and I would caution that, just to think about it, we're talking about the possibility of a rate increase on water and maybe on storm water, and I, what's the goal here, and I think is to the streets, I think, and so we just think that's something to think about, but we also have to think about what the progression will have to be to get it on the ballot.
Correct.
The more fingers it has to get, more committees, more the time consuming, so, whatever.
We, we can reach out and get feedback from the previous committee. What things that they heard.
It would be, it would be certainly appropriate to, can, you know, include a drop dead date because of the time-sensitive nature of the, what we're undertaking here.
Okay, great, thank you all. Any other questions?
Just, if we could poll council on which version everybody is, is leaning towards, so we have a little bit better direction.
Okay, well, let's do that, it'll be fun, yes. Amy, let's start with you, we'll work this way.
Thank you. I am in favor of the expanded uses, with the edits previously mentioned more closely tying it to the street infrastructure and adding sidewalks. Thanks.
Thank you. Andrea?
From the standpoint of the voters, I think the less we change, the better, that just to keep what we have, I think that people would be, what, there's so much uncertainty financially right now, I think I, I would go with, just stay with what we have.
Okay, thank you. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would, I would kind of agree with both previous council members, perhaps what we could do is solicit the, the input, see where we are, and make a decision. I, I myself am in favor of the expanded, but nonetheless, if there's a strong public reaction, I think that we have to be ready to refocus just on what we've got and carry forward with that.
Jerry?
I would be in favor of the expanded uses, but I'm just not, maybe I'm just not 100% sure on what the real downside is to losing the enterprise designation, so if that doesn't seem to be a huge concern, then I, it sounds like the expanded uses is probably necessary.
Emily?
Yeah, I, I favor the expanded uses version with the discussion and edits that we've already talked about, and I think another thing to, you know, just as with any ballot issue, I, well, there will be a public education piece that we need to really hone in on in some way, so that people know why it reads a little different this time, and what it's for, and how it'll be approached and so forth.
Kathy?
I too. It would be much easier from a positive vote to go the way we have it currently, but I do believe we do need the expanded language as long as it's concise and specific to the streets, because we have some other important issues that are gonna be on the ballot, and we, last thing we want to do is create anything that is not transparent.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, thank you, Leo.
Just you.
Me?
Oh, you don't get a vote, never mind. It wasn't tied.
Thanks for reminding me. I, I, because of all the other things that are going on, I honestly think the original language, I would go for that. But I could be, my mind could be changed on that. I see the need for the, all the other stuff, because I had, people ask me, how come you didn't put curb and gutter in? But we got a heck of a lot of streets done with what we had.
Yeah.
So.
We, we will plan on bringing both, both sets of language back with the expanded version being refined.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Leo.
Thank you.
Let's go on to executive session, that's 11A, executive session to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop a strategy for negotiations, and to instruct negotiators pursuant to CRS 24-6-4024E regarding potential funding of sources for recreation district operations, and additional terms of an intergovernmental agreement between the city and the recreation district. I'd ask for a motion for us to do that. John?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council enter into executive session for the following purpose, executive session to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop a strategy for negotiations, and to instruct negotiators pursuant to CRS 24-6-4024E regarding potential funding of sources for recreation district operations, and additional terms of an intergovernmental agreement between the city and recreation district.
Okay, second? Jerry? Second, thank you. Any discussion of that motion? Here, no, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hemmerich?
Aye.
Okay, so we adjourn to the anteroom. Thank you.